Good afternoon. Welcome to the regular meeting of the New Ulm Planning Commission, New Ulm, Minnesota, Thursday, October 25th, 2018, 4:30 PM. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the September 27th, 2018 meeting.
So moved?
Second. A motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item two, public hearings. A, consider the applicant of Derek Windshuttle requesting a variance to permit the construction of a detached garage 24 feet into the front yard setback area on the property legally described as Lot 7 of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249 and the balance of Lot 8 of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249, street address 1220 Second Street North. Look for staff for report.
All right. Senior Packet, we're looking for the variance for 24 feet into the front yard setback. Being it is a corner lot, so we have two front yard setbacks on this, on the corner lot. It is zoned as an R1, single-family residential district. They're saying that we should have a front yard having a depth of not less than 30 feet. In the, you have that drawing there showing approximately where the garage is going on the backside of the house there with the driveway coming in off of Second. This was kind of a unique situation as previously that .06 acres of 15.98 feet wide was owned by the city. And the reason they owned it was at, maybe I should let Mr. Schnoebrik explain this.
Well, in, I believe it was 1951, the city purchased two lots in this subdivision, Lot 8 and Lot 9, for the purpose of extending Linden Street through to Second North Street. Up until that time, Linden Street ended at the alley, there's an alley between lots halfway between Third and Second North Street. And so, as a result, Lot 7 and the house on Lot 7, to construct that house, they just had to maintain a side yard, a normal side yard setback because there was no street next door. Then, you know, the, the street was installed and the city retained, you know, that 15.98 feet, as I guess you could call it, an extended boulevard. Recently, Mr. Windshuttle approached the city about purchasing the property and the city council was agreeable to that request. And as a result, he went from having a side yard setback of, the required is 10 feet, actually in this case it'll only be five feet, to now having a required setback of 30 feet. And, you know, later on in the agenda, you will be approving or being asked to approve simple lot divisions for this particular lot, Lot 8, and a simple lot division for Lot 9, which will allow us to finally plat an 80-foot right-of-way for Linden Street then with two adjoining parcels of property that in one case will be sold to Mr. Windshuttle and then in the other case, the city will end up holding on to it.
Senior Packet also has some pictures of the lot. As you can see on one of the last pictures, the house, the picture's taken off of Second with the SUV sitting in the driveway. And the one before that is, there's a blue flag and the yellow or orange measuring stick. The blue flag is approximately the property line and the wheel stick is approximately where the garage would end up, that 24 feet into the setback.
If you look at, if you go to the simple lot division agenda item, there's some aerial photos provided there, which when you look at across the street from this particular location, there's a garage that has already been constructed that has, actually is closer to the property line than this one would be.
The one across the street is approximately four to five feet off of the, off the property line.
Okay. Well, commissioners, what are your wishes or thoughts?
A public hearing. Anybody else got anything to?
This is a public hearing. If anybody else in the audience would like to be heard, please step up to the podium. None being, nobody else being here?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None being said, motion carried. We'll go on to item B. Consider the applicant of Dean Berdorff requesting a variance to permit the construction of a parking lot with a zero front yard setback on property located at 500 to 520 South Valley Street. This is a public hearing.
Right, senior packets, we have the request for the zero foot setback. Parking lots are subject to the same setback rules as structures. It is zoned to be two service district. They're looking at to construct a parking lot in this area. The 520 South Valley Street was granted a zero foot setback for the construction of a building and loading dock back in 2008. If you go to the pictures, you can see where the picture facing south, the gray shed, there's a bump out on the backside of the shed where the loading dock is located and that is approximately the, the property line for that. And that would be the zero foot setback off the property line. If you go to the next picture, it shows the big storage shed and then the smaller storage shed with the six overhead doors. The required setback in a B2 is 10 feet, but being across from residential district, it bumps it up to 25 feet. So approximately the setback for that area off of that front side of that storage shed with the six overhead doors, 10 feet going back towards the railroad track would be approximately the 25-foot setback that would be required in that area because of being across from the residential district, which would leave those lots very tight up against the railroad track with the setbacks off the track and the front yard. The lots are only 50 foot wide to begin with.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to be heard? I guess I got a question for staff. Do we receive any written or oral responses to the public hearing?
I did not receive anything, Mr. Schnoebrik.
Yeah. Okay. I believe we got the owner of the property here present. If anybody has any questions for him, the commission?
How many trucks you guys planning on putting down there? I mean, it's gonna be, is this gonna be a boatload of rentals? Yeah, please.
Please step up and state your name and address for the record.
Dean Berdorff, 117 North Broadway. So, it would be filled with U-Hauls, probably 10 to 15, starting from the loading dock back. So if we get the variance, he can park in front of that loading dock because it won't be used as a semi-loading dock. And then, I don't know how big, the biggest U-Haul is, is that 20 feet or 25 feet? We just want to be able to double them up so he has room for all that he needs from the warehouse all the way to the end of the property line, about 500 South Valley.
So going towards New Ulm North?
Yes. Mm-hmm. And I was going by what he currently had for inventory down on Front Street. I was guessing it was like between 10 and 15 units, not just big trucks, but trailers and stuff like that. But the smaller trailers that were like 10, 12 feet, we would like to double them up.
So if I'm looking at this, looking at our packet here, Dean, so you're saying where the newer addition is on that Quonset type building, that's where you're gonna be parking the trailers over there?
No, we'd be going north.
North of there?
Yep. All the way down to about the softball building.
Okay.
Their property line is about where the transformer is. So I think that would be enough room to line them up nicely or neatly or something.
Does anybody else think this is gonna be a safety problem down the road?
A little concerned about backing them in and out off of Valley Street. It's a pretty busy road. That's just, I don't love thought. I mean...
Well, we still have frontage to go onto the gravel before the 25 feet and then turn onto the street so you'd be able to see traffic and then go back. It's not like you would stop in the middle of the street and back in if that's what you were thinking. It would be more of a swing in and back in.
So currently, when people rent these U-Hauls, then do they leave a vehicle there or?
No.
No, they're just?
No. Because if they're picking up a trailer, then they're taking the trailer. If they're taking the truck, they probably need the car to transport themselves. But I haven't seen any people leaving cars or vehicles at his current location.
Mm-hmm. And you've mapped it out that you think you can get 10, 15 of these units?
So if you look at the, it's the photo, it's page 21 of, there's 47 total. If you look at the bottom, it shows the, the blue building and then the six garage stalls. So the, it would tells me that, that the wall of the blue building is the property line. So if you extend that in a straight line, that'll give you an idea of where the property line is. And just to note that, you know, it would not be acceptable for any vehicles or, you know, any other items to be placed on the public right-of-way.
If you have pictures, the white building on 500 South Valley, the two-stall garage, that's sitting about on the property line. So it'd be from there back also, if he was giving you a guide from the warehouse to the back.
Yeah, and I see that you have between the single-stall garage and that double garage, you've got a little space there, real estate. How many feet is that approximately?
Where's gonna be the office?
In the 520 South Valley. So he'd have space between 520 South Valley, the new gray part of the building, and then where the storage units are. So he'd have room in between there to park two.
So he's moving into the, to the big warehouse?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Just renting the half, just the new part, not the Quonset part.
Okay.
For a truck repair shop and rent U-Hauls.
Now, Dave, didn't you just state that we, any other vehicle, it couldn't be just a U-Haul then, could be parked if we're granting this variance then today? Is that what you're, you're insinuating?
No, I'm just saying that you, you know, you can't park in the public right-of-way and, you know, unless they're parking on street, I guess, would be fine.
Right.
It would be in the boulevard area.
Legally, not legally.
Not legally.
The bump out where the loading dock is, anything in front of that would have to be open all the way down. Yep.
Which is how many feet do you guess, so what, 15?
Roughly, yeah.
So we'd have 15 feet and then the U-Hauls would be parked there.
Behind that line, yes.
Behind that, so, yeah. Just giving them a rough idea where they'd be sitting.
Yeah.
I don't know. It looks like it'd be a challenge, but it looks like they must have it figured out to make it work.
Well, then do we, concerns about any of the other vehicles? If you had a repair shop, then where do they park? Or how do we enforce it?
They're in and out. The shop isn't big enough to have a waiting list of 10 or the area isn't big. So it's in and then it's repaired and then it's out, if that's what you were asking.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing or?
I'll close the public hearing, open it up for discussion.
I do have reservations about the parking, but I'm for business.
And currently, he's the only one in New Ulm renting U-Hauls.
Right now, currently, he's down on?
Front Street.
Front Street?
Mm-hmm.
Did they quit renting them out here on 29?
Mm-hmm.
Seems to me like it's just gonna be pretty tight. That's just my thoughts, yeah, and concerns. But I'd like to maintain a business also.
I suppose we can't give a temporary one, huh?
No.
The variance isn't just for this use. I mean, if the, I mean, once the parking lot's in, then the variance is?
Well, the variance would be to allow parking up to the property.
Okay.
So...
That goes with the property then?
Goes, stays with the property, not with the business.
But with the current situation now, if you don't approve it, we can still park 25 feet back, right, from the building?
Correct.
So whether it's approved or not, it's just, we're gonna do it, but it's not, we're not gonna get as many as he prefers in. We're gonna go 25 feet from the warehouse that they showed you where the line was at, put it in there, and we will still have them lined up. We just want to double them up so that he can have inventory.
Sure.
I guess I'm gonna ask staff, have we done anything? I mean, we did the building wise, but I mean, have we directed a parking lot within the community for any other unique situations?
Well, we've allowed reduced parking lot setbacks in other locations, yeah. We've done that.
You gotta close meeting? I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None being said, motion carried. This will be a recommendation to the November 6 council meeting.
Okay.
4:30.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Item three, consider for the approval, final plot of the depot second addition.
The applicant is the Canadian Pacific Railway. The property owner, we have two property owners. One is the Canadian Pacific Railway, the other is HEICO, which is a general partnership. The current legal description of the property is Lot 1, Block 1 Depot Edition and part of South German Park. Street address is 200 South Valley Street. The property is zoned I-2, which is a general industrial district, and B2 service business district. The I-2 portion is the property owned by HEICO and the B2 is property owned by the Canadian Pacific. Status of the plat, city council approved the preliminary plat with conditions at its October 2nd, 2018 meeting. Property is located west of South Valley Street and north of Third South Street. The property is the location of the Canadian Pacific Railway Depot and a storage building used by Hyman Construction Company. The property surrounding the platted area is zoned I-2. Comprehensive plan designates the property for industrial land uses. Property to the east, north, and south is used for railroad purposes and property to north and south is also used for industrial purposes. Hyman Construction Company is located to the west along with some self-storage units. Plat would create one lot. The new lot would have a total lot area of 1.91 acres. The comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. And the property lines surrounding the building being sold to the Canadian Pacific would comply with city setback requirements. Utilities to serve the property are located in South Valley and Third South Streets and the plat would allow a storage building owned by HEICO to be sold to the Canadian Pacific. Status of conditions required for plat approval. Number one is pay the plating fee of $180. That payment has been made. Number two is provide an electronic file, the plat in AutoCAD or newer format. That notification has been provided to the applicant and land surveyor. And number three is provide a legal description for the remaining portion of the HEICO property and that legal description is pending. Attached are the final plat and two aerial photos. The one aerial photo is, was prepared by city staff. The second aerial photo was provided by the Canadian Pacific with the, their initial request for consideration of this matter. And there's some distances provided there that shows you the relationship between the building and the new property line. Staff would recommend approval of the final plat with conditions. And then there are two motions provided, one to approve and one to deny.
What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plot with addition of, with conditions.
I'll second.
A motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None being said, motion carried. And we'll go on to the next item here would be item four. Consider for approval, a simple lot division of Lot 8, plat of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249 and Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249. Look for staff for report.
Okay. In this case, the city of New Ulm is the applicant. The current owners of the property are the city of New Ulm and Derek and Kyla Windshuttle. The current legal description is Lot 8 of the plat of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249 and Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 242, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, except the southeasterly 15.5 feet thereof. That 15.5 feet runs the entire length of this particular plat and that is part of Second North Street. Street address is 1224 Second North Street. The zoning is R1, single-family residence district. So I'll give you a little bit of background, I did that previously. In 1941, the city of New Ulm approved the plat of Valley First Edition. This plat included the establishment of Linden Street from Fifth North Street to a line approximately 160 feet short of Second North Street. In 1951, the city purchased lots 8 and 9 of the plat of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249 and Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 242. The city constructed Linden Street through lots 8 and 9 to Second North Street, but never formally platted the right-of-way as Linden Street. Recently, the city sold a portion of Lot 8 to Derek and Kyla Windshuttle, the owners of the adjoining property to the east. Their lot is legally described as Lot 7. On the deed, this property was described as the balance of Lot 8 of the plat of Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 249 and Sub-Lot 2 of Outlot 242. When the deed was sent to the Brown County Recorder's Office for filing, they found that Lot 8 had never been subdivided and remained a whole lot. As a result, there is no balance of Lot 8 and the use of that legal description is not accurate. While the original deed was accepted and filed by Brown County, the city is obligated to correct the legal description on the deed. This will be accomplished by approving a simple lot division of Lot 8 with new legal descriptions. The proposed legal descriptions would be as follows, and I'm gonna dispense with reading the plat of portions. So we would have the parcel A would be the northeasterly 15.98 feet of Lot 8 and parcel B would be Lot 8 except the northeasterly 15.98 feet and the southeasterly 15.50 feet. Parcel A will be conveyed to Derek and Kyla Windshuttle. Parcel B will be platted as Linden Street. So attached, you have a drawing and legal description prepared by Bolton &amp; Inc. You have an aerial photograph showing the location of the property and then you have one ground level photograph. Staff would recommend approval of the simple lot division, subject to the following conditions. The first is that the city record the resolution authorizing the lot division with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And number two, that parcel A will be combined with Lot 7 to form one parcel of property for tax and building purposes. Then there are two motions, one to approve and one to deny.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the simple lot division with conditions. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. On to the next item here.
So now we're going to go to the other side of the street. And so, if it's acceptable to the commission, I'll maybe dispense with?
Please.
Some of the legal descriptions. The, again, the applicant's, the city, the street address is 1226 Second North. Again, in order to establish a street in this location, the city will need to prepare a right-of-way plat. The right-of-way plat will include a portion of Lot 8 and a portion of Lot 9 to a... of Lot 8 and a portion of Lot 9 to establish Linden Street as an 80-foot wide right-of-way. In order to proceed with this platte, Lot 8 and Lot 9 first need to be subdivided through the simple lot division process. So the proposed legal descriptions for Lot 9 would be the southerly 4.02 feet of Lot 9, except the southerly 15.5 feet thereof. And then parcel B would be Lot 9, except the southerly 4.02 feet and the southeasterly 15.5 feet. Parcel A will be retained by the city of New Ulm. And parcel B will be platted as Linden Street. Attached is a drawing and legal description prepared by Bolton &amp; Inc. Then there's an aerial photograph and one ground level photograph. Staff would recommend approval of the simple lot division, subject to the recording of the resolution authorizing the lot division with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And then two motions are provided, one to approve the request and one to deny the request.
Thank you, Dave.
I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Well, the next item of business would be item six, to discuss parking requirements for the B3 general business district zoning district.
Okay, we've talked about this subject at the last two commission meetings. Attached is a report on this subject. I would like to note that the staff members that have been, that participated in putting together the report included Steve Kahler, the city engineer, Joe Stotheim, the assistant city engineer, Mr. Zabel as the billing official, Chris Dalton, who is our economic development director slash assistant city manager, and myself. In addition to the report, there is a zoning map which shows the location of the B3 property in our downtown area. And then some parking information for those B3 zoned blocks. So what I'd like to do is just go through the report real quickly. And then we can have some discussion after that. We have two issues that we are looking at. The first issue is how to provide parking for customers, employees, and residents in the downtown area. And, you know, the downtown area has changed and continues to change. And at one time, the primary purpose of parking downtown was for customers and secondarily for employees and residents. I would say that that has changed as far as, you know, who needs, what the needs are for parking in the downtown area. I would say maybe it's a little bit more equal. Obviously, retail has changed in the downtown area. So that kind of leads us to the second issue, which is if a property owner wishes to provide additional dwelling units on their property in the downtown area, and they have no additional space for off-street parking, how should the city react to that situation? So, our current regulations are that there are no parking requirements for permitted uses in the B3 zone. So the idea was that the city was going to provide parking in the downtown area. And the city was able to do that by having parking meters. And the revenue that was generated through the parking meters was then used to acquire off-street parking. In addition, there is obviously on-street parking that can be used for this purpose too. Parking meters went out in 1990 and were replaced with a special service district, which generates $40,000 a year, which is used almost exclusively to pay for the salaries of the people that enforce parking in the downtown area. So there's really not a lot of money there to be used for other purposes. New dwelling units in the B3 zone are required to follow existing parking requirements, and that is to provide one and a half parking stalls per unit. So, we previously talked about, you know, having land parcels that are fully occupied by buildings. In addition, we have land parcels that lack sufficient space or usable area to accommodate additional off-street parking. So, what are some potential modifications to accommodate more dwelling units? Number one is what I'm going to describe as parking lot changes. So, and I'm going to just identify some steps that could be taken. One would be to designate the North Mall Surface Lot. That's the one that abuts North German and Second North Streets for apartment parking. Secondly, we could allow the North German Street Lot, which that's the one that abuts North German Street and Third North Streets, to be used for overnight parking. Three, we could provide one or more rows of leased parking in the Broadway Lot. That's the one that abuts City Hall here. And four, we could provide more leased parking in other city lots. And I should note that some of these comments are not necessarily directed primarily at apartment parking, but also at parking in general in the downtown area. We could look at parking regulation changes. One would be to allow overnight parking on Minnesota Street. Current regulations prohibit parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. A second is we could charge for free parking in the surface lot between the mall and the theater. Then we have parking policy changes. We could allow leased parking to be assigned to an apartment unit and not to an individual. We could establish a notification system that provides apartment residents with information on current parking issues downtown. The city currently uses, it's called the NYXL Notification System for Snow Emergencies. Possibly this is something that could be expanded for other parking purposes downtown. And then we could require leased parking users to prepay for their spaces. For snow removal, we need to provide one or more locations for downtown residents to move vehicles during snow removal. That's currently something that does happen. But, you know, if you have more units, that means you have to have more space. And then for snow removal, ticket vehicles who violate snow removal procedures, they would allow one courtesy ticket. And then after that, you know, you pay a fine. Then there were a number of miscellaneous comments. One would be to encourage the EDA to allow leased parking or free overnight parking on their property at Fourth North and North Broadway. Two would be to encourage the Brown County Museum to allow leased parking on their property at Center Street and North Broadway. Three would be to purchase additional property for downtown parking, including land on the west side of North Broadway, and have that designated for leased and apartment purposes. Four would be to evaluate changing on-street parking from parallel to angled on First North and Second North Street between North German Street and Broadway. We're not necessarily saying all, you know, but just to look at locations where that might be possible. And then finally, when approving conditional use permits for apartment dwellings downtown, that we expand the permitted distance for the required off-street parking spaces to be provided. For example, with the case of Mr. Bodie's project on Center Street, we had a requirement that those parking spaces had to be provided within, I don't know, maybe 150 feet or something like that. Perhaps we expand that to 250 feet or 300 feet. So that's an option. So that kind of concludes staff report other than the map. And then the last sheet identifies parking by block. And if you look real closely at the map that was provided, you can pick out the block numbers. They're normally where the alley is. And so what we did is we took the different blocks. We identified the number of parcels that had more than five parking spaces, less than five parking spaces, and then no parking spaces, or no room for parking spaces. So when you add all of those up on both the north and south end, you know, we have a number of parcels that don't have room for parking at all. And others that have limited room. So if the intent is to accommodate more dwelling units downtown, we're going to probably have to look at taking some measures to make that possible.
Any discussion?
Now, if you want to, you know, take this home and think about it for a month, and we can come back and talk about it at next month's meeting, that certainly would
Sure.
would be appropriate.
Dave, you got here, purchase additional property for downtown parking land on the west side of North Broadway for leased and apartment purposes. You have any ideas of which blocks you're talking about?
Well, I think if you look at the downtown area, this issue maybe isn't as much of a problem on the fringes of the downtown area. It's the core of what we call the downtown area. And I would say First South to Third North. And then even, you could even maybe
Yeah, because that's a smaller.
make it even a little bit smaller and say maybe Second North to Center Street. And so I think, you know, the greatest impact would probably be in making changes within those areas. You know, if you maybe acquire property on the far end of the downtown, I just don't see that being
Be very attractive, yeah.
attractive to employees. So I think in response to your question, I think we probably would be looking at properties, you know, across on the west, you know, that are within those same parameters.
Okay.
Because of its, you know, one of the options you had on here was the, the, sorry, the historical society. Well, don't they use, the Brown County Museum, don't they use that for their own?
Well, I think the comment that was made was that they have a number of spaces and they sit empty.
Okay.
And so why not approach them and say, why don't you take five spaces and
Lease them.
lease them out, you know? I'm sure in that location, you probably would find people that would be, that might be interested.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Or you want to think on it for another month and come back?
Yeah, because the overnight parking, what's the difference between overnight parking and apartment parking? In the first, yeah, in the lot changes, designate for apartment parking and then designate for use for overnight parking. What would be the difference?
There probably isn't a difference.
There isn't.
I would say that residents are going to be your overnight parkers.
Right.
I don't think there's too many employees that, you know, that would fall into that category.
Just somewhat long hours. Yeah. Yep, I think we should discuss it more next week, next month.
Okay.
Because this is a recommendation, what to change the, what are we doing recommendations changing the?
Well, actually, when you, you know, when we initially presented this, we talked about possibly making changes to the zoning ordinance. And I don't actually see any need to make any changes to the zoning ordinance. It has to be change, other changes, you know, with the way we manage parking downtown. That's, that I think is going to be the best approach to dealing with that issue.
Well, and we don't know the future of some of these buildings at this point in time either, until we have solid plans.
True.
So, I mean, because the decision, if we would make a decision, say today, and we have a vacant building, and then all of a sudden, we're going to be reversing a decision possibly, so.
Yeah.
But it's good that we're keeping it in the discussion
Yeah.
at this point in time.
Yeah.
I guess I like the idea that if there's, for apartments, that we maybe designate that, you know, if someone, a landowner, you know, by a unit, you know, one or two units, if we would perhaps. And that way he can have here his tenant, you know, have a proposed parking within our community, but.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll put it back on the agenda at next month's meeting. And maybe what staff can do is identify items that we think may be warrant further consideration. Or I think in response to Mr. Mack's comment that, you know, maybe these are things that we don't implement immediately. Maybe these are things, approaches that we would fall back to if it becomes necessary.
Do we have a waiting list for leased parking right now currently too? So, I mean, so maybe we could come back with a report and just have it identified that we have X amount that are waiting and we could possibly produce X amount?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's one of the issues is that then, you know, who has priority and how do you dispense any free spaces or any spaces that become available? Yeah.
The lot that's at, behind the old Ben Franklin, the Second North and German, is that a free two-hour parking? Is that what that is?
It's two-hour.
Not leased. There's no leased spots there?
Right now, there's a charging station.
But that's it, but there's no leased spot?
That's it. There are.
I mean, how much is that lot used?
Well, there are leased spaces on the German Street side, kind of back in that.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know that those are all being used at the present time.
Yeah. But how much is that other lot used now that Herburgers is closed? Probably not.
Yeah.
Very limited.
Because it's like a two-hour, probably two-hour, three-hour parking limit.
Right. Yeah. No, it doesn't see a lot of use.
Yeah. The parking underneath the mall, leased parking underneath the mall goes away.
Is there someone that's on a city council as part of this advisory group?
Was there?
Is there?
No. This was just staff that put this together.
Well, no other discussion. We'll bring this back for future discussion. Look for item seven here. Receive report on city council decisions concerning planning commission matters on October 2018.
Okay, at the October 2nd meeting, as reported previously, they approved the preliminary platte of Depot Second Edition. At the October 16th meeting, they conducted a public hearing and approved a resolution authorizing a loan with conditions to windings incorporated in the amount of $250,000 from the city's revolving loan fund. I think as you probably all know, windings will be occupying the former L.K. building at, I think it's 15 Sampson Street. At that same meeting, they approved the acceptance of a $325,000 At that same meeting, they approved the acceptance of a $325,000, it's called the MIF, stands for Minnesota Investment Fund Grant. And that's, again, is on behalf of windings. And they authorized appropriate city officials to sign the grant contract, subject to windings accepting the contract terms. And then finally, they approved a separation agreement and release of claims regarding, I guess, terms of severance of employment of the city manager, and his last day of work will be November 15th. That concludes the report.
And item eight would be receive report on heritage preservation commission activities.
We did not have a meeting this month, and we're continuing to move forward with Herman Condition Assessment Study.
And no further business, meeting adjourned.